All right. Good morning. It is 10:08 and we appreciate your patience with our delay this morning. We have support staff getting us up and running and we're excited to be able to record this meeting to make it available for the public. So I would like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission meeting for Tuesday, March 25th. Like to call the meeting to order and I will do roll call. Commissioner Quinn is present. Commissioner Campbell?
Present.
Commissioner Knoll?
Present.
All right. We have Mr. Cormode here this morning, so if you please stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I want to read a few verses from First Chronicles, the 29th chapter where David is praying and blessing the Lord. Blessed are you, O Lord, the God of Israel, our Father, forever and ever. Yours, O Lord, is the greatness and the power and the glory and the victory and the majesty, for all that is in the heaven and in the earth is yours. Yours is the kingdom, O Lord, and you are exalted as head above all. Both riches and honor come from you and you rule over all. In your hand are power and might and in your hand is to make great and to give strength to all. And now we thank you, our God, and praise your glorious name. Let's pray. Father, thank you that you are all-powerful. Thank you, Father, that you are the source of all that we have, all that we know. I pray, Father, that today and as the commissioners work through the items that they're concerned about, looking at how they are handling the budget and the affairs of the county, that you will guide them, that you will remind them that you are the one who is providing. I pray, Father, that we will trust in you to provide what we need day by day, so that your name will be glorified in all of the decisions that are made. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, public comment?
May I?
Yes, sir.
I don't know rules. Three minutes. Something that's been on my heart for quite a while. And the other, the other week I was researching the building of the Fifth Street Bridge. See, I remember Fifth Street when there was no bridge there, being older than Joe Biden. But in researching that, I discovered that in 1947, the then Atchison County Commissioners were appealing to KDOT, build us a straighter road to Topeka from Atchison. Ten years later, they started that construction by building the link from Atchison to Nortonville. We need to face the reality that that road is built to road standards from 75 years ago. I've heard comments from the Sheriff's Department that it's an unsafe road. US 73 that was built 30 years later is built to a different standard. It's a safer road. And even though it was built 30 years later, 11 years ago, KDOT decided the portion of US 73 from Lomont to Heavenworth City Limits was unsafe. They closed it and rebuilt it again already. They've rebuilt it twice in the last 30 years. US 59 from Atchison to Nortonville, none of the intersections have a right turn pullout to make it safe to slow down and to make a right turn to go off the road. There's almost no shoulders on that road. We need to call on KDOT, start rebuilding this road. Ten years from now, maybe they'll get it done, like in 47 to 57.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Any other public comments? None. Okay, on the agenda, I have in addition to new business, I have a purchase order for the Road and Bridge Superintendent for a pipe order that I would like to add to new business. And so with that addition.
Since I haven't seen any.
Oh, sorry.
Anything.
Well, the printer isn't quite.
Well, I haven't, we haven't been able to access any.
So we'll have commission meeting minutes for the 11th and the 18th today. And then the Finance Director's Review. Unfinished business, care recording, consent agenda from last week. Sports Complex, Fire District Meeting for Thursday. County Lake One Pager, then Road and Bridge. Joe Snyder, Corey Scott sent our February 2025 EMS report, which I can pull that up for you, too. Sorry, let me find Corey. Might have filed it, actually. There it is. Okay, so the Commission, February Report, 911 responses, 175, 38 transfers. 86 went to Amberwell, eight went to Mosaic.
Okay, I'm not so worried about.
Okay, okay. So that was it. And then adding this purchase order. And then, yeah, okay. So with the review of that and the addition of this purchase order, I would look for a motion to approve this week's agenda. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. For the consent agenda, did you both have an opportunity to read the minutes from March 11th and March 18th?
Nope.
Okay. I will, they're short and sweet. I'll give the, I couldn't access it on my, give me a second. I'll just let you read them. Were you able to, hold on. County Clerk. Here's the three 18 minutes. If you just want to read them, they're pretty short and sweet from last week.
Have you seen them?
I'm going to defer on the 11th. I was not here. The 18th I read. I did read those.
Okay, do you want to, the 11th, too?
I've seen.
You saw the 11th, right? Yeah, I thought that. Okay. So next is the Finance Director Review. So Mark, if you want to go over those numbers with us, then I will call for a motion on consent agenda.
Okay. So our payroll for Friday, the 28th is $103,003,058. So it's under around that $200,000 mark that it averages. Credit cards is $1,051.08. Out of that, $801.84 is County Attorney, was for certified mailings and association for the attorney. $249.24 was to Community Corrections for travel and meeting expenses. So for this paycheck tomorrow, March 26th, the total is $66,941.46. However, $46,785.38 of that total is for repayment to the Kansas Department, or to the state of Kansas for community corrections for overpayment on grants. So it's really only about $20,000 in accounts payable purchases. None of those looked out of line. They were all normal expenses. So that's all I have for that.
Okay, perfect. I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Campbell?
Last Friday, I visited the Project Concern folks out in Effingham. Showed up just at the right time. They were all playing bingo and just eating. So I, I told them that we support them completely and had a good conversation. And I even met with one of the folks here in town at Project Concern, just following up. And had a good visit both places and I just, just thought it was important to let them know that we do support them.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Knoll?
I attended last Thursday, the grand breaking for the Area Agency on Aging Building in Hiawatha. There was Potentates from Random State, the KDOT and things like that was there. It was pretty well attended for a very cold morning, Thursday. Glad it wasn't Wednesday. We wouldn't have been able to be there. And then I had to turn around and I had kneecap meeting that night in Hiawatha. So it was on the road a lot and everything went well there, too.
Okay, awesome. The only comments I have is just to say thank you to the public for being patient with us through our current situation this past week. We appreciate your patience and your grace. I can assure you that we have an outstanding team here at Atchison County, from our IT Director to all the other departments that have been pitching in to, to help. So just want to say thank you to everyone behind the scenes that has been working through this and just appreciate the public's patience. Yesterday, I filled in a few calls with people. It's interesting. I hadn't had any calls until yesterday, which is good, but people are just kind of concerned when they start hearing about, you know, penalties being assessed by the state or anything. And I can assure you, I learned last night that we do have control here at Atchison County. It would be under the Treasurer's discretion to work with you through any of those things. So don't, don't freak out. We understand. We want to give you grace like you're giving us grace as we work through this. And just wanted to make sure everybody's minds are at ease that we understand the situation and, and we're here to help. So that's really all I have. Presentations of petitions or proclamations. I do actually have a question on this one. We have a proclamation for April and I was wondering on the scheduling because the county clerk will not be here today or next Tuesday. So did you want to schedule that proclamation during our meeting or did you want to try to do a another time?
What is that?
It's the proclamation for child abuse. So our county attorney, Community Corrections, and possibly the Health Department, everybody was just going to be present for the proclamation. Do you want to just do it next Tuesday, April 1st, since it's for April? Is that okay? All right. So we'll add that to next week's agenda on April 1st and coordinate that. Unfinished business, so we have to record our first Friday segment for care today. So we'll keep that top of mind as we move throughout. We approved the consent agenda for last week. Sports Complex Need Requests. We will have our Finance Director go through that with us. I think he sent us an email. Sorry. Kind of share this with you if you want to look. Sports Complex.
Yes.
So Mark can kind of cover this with us.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of things about that. Okay, so I put together a spreadsheet that shows when the.
Yeah, I'm not able to either.
Okay, so basically it was a spreadsheet of when the board allocated the $500,000, $100,000 to Effingham, $400,000 to Atchison, verified all of the expenses against the bank statements. Pat put together a spreadsheet. I verified that again, just to make sure we're all on the same page before we move forward. So out of that, Effingham has about $90,800 left. Atchison has about $86,900 left. Out of that allocation, they still get their own maintenance quarterly, but this is just, they are paying out of that whatever they need to. But out of this allocation, that's just what is left after the board allocated it and the expenses they've spent from it. So there was a list that Effingham turned in to me that was kind of in orange, which I know you guys may or may not have seen, but they want to fix batting cages outside. This is kind of their prioritization list. Build or purchase shade for the bleachers. Put a water hydrant down by the baseball fields. They want a new gator for dragging fields. Build bullpens for home and visitors. They want a sound system, storage sheds, and fix a leaking roof. That they want to kind of occur this year. And then next year, new dugouts, new larger bleachers, elevated press boxes, backstops at the fields, new scoreboards. Down, down the road, as in like a five-year plan, they want a smaller indoor facility. So if it's bad weather or they can do other events inside of it year-round, not just when it's nice outside. So this was the list that they asked if I could be the middleman to meet with the board to see if you guys approve this, so that they can get going.
Good question right off.
Sure.
How do we have a fighter plan when we don't know whether we're going to, I mean, when the sun sets, we're going to be out of the picture. And I don't see anything, I, I wouldn't approve anything even suggesting that. It's possible. I don't know what's going to happen, but that's, that's the first thing that struck me is.
Maybe we just look at it a year-by-year basis?
Yeah. And if they have a thing for next year, I think it's.
Good to have feature progress.
We can say, well, tentatively, it looks good or like that. It would almost be like if we would approve spending more money than we had. Well, no.
Yeah, so.
So 78.5, a round, I was trying to add them in my head of now. It's still within the money they have a lot in. So they can get now done and even start with next year.
Right. And so that was my next question was, do we just go up until like, like use what you've allocated? And then we come back and reallocate and revisit the list?
I think so.
Okay. So, okay, they essentially, they would have to turn in the receipt here, like the invoice, and then Exchange Bank, we would put, you guys would approve the expense. It would go back to Exchange Bank to cut the check to the vendor. That's, that's how it would work. Okay. So if we're good with that, then, so I talked to the President of Exchange Bank and just verified kind of conversations that we've had before here about, do we pay off the bond? Should we not pay off the bond? How much interest is left? How much interest do we accrue? So pretty much from an interest earned versus interest paid standpoint, leaving things as they are makes the most sense in the banking industry, and I think here, too. Because we would, in the amount of time left, we would accrue about $97,000 in interest. But we would only pay $8,500 in interest to have the bond. So the interest is low, but the, the interest paying is low, but the interest earning is higher on these accounts. So it's like you're kind of making money to pay it off, sort of thing. That could change, of course. Something could happen next year and the interest could go wonky, but right now that's what it's looking like. And then just lastly, the amount in the Management and Operating Reserve Account, which is where these projects are paid from, is about $948,000. So after this allocation is exhausted, then we would just look at what projects is left. And then the board can decide how much they want to reallocate, if at all. So, okay. One thing that didn't make it in the email, I was kind of thinking for, I guess proactively thinking, if this Management and Reserve Account is able to fund projects and that's what it's used for, management, right? We've currently, it's not a lot of money, but it's $7,794 that the county has paid for the insurance premium on the ball fields here in Atchison. The facility, irrigation, pump station, electric, storage building, and then the fields themselves. So if it's for management and operating, I guess one could make an argument, why would the county be paying for it when we're paying all of these other things and there's plenty of money in there to do it?
That's a good point.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Yesterday, not today.
Yeah.
I'm surprised I, I didn't ever pick up on that.
Yeah.
It's part of the premium. So I think that at this point, if the board wanted to do it, I should prepare like an invoice to, for the board to approve and then submit it to Exchange to pay the county back.
Yeah.
So on the Western, the 377 has that insurance?
No. I think it's because it's their own in some fashion that's different than Atchison.
Well, I'm saying we're not paying it, but.
Yeah, they're paying it.
They are. That's good.
Yeah, which they're paying it out of the money that Exchange already pays them for management.
So it's already coming out of that?
It's already coming out of it. And I was able to see those, those bookkeeping ledgers where the, the school district is paying it out of what they receive from Exchange. So it just makes sense. If that's happening there, why wouldn't it happen in Atchison, too?
Yep.
So it, it's been this way ever since. So I don't think that there's an argument to go back and recoup it. You should stay probably in the year that it's happening. So we paid it in '25. We should at least get reimbursed for '25. I don't think going back that far is good practice when we didn't know it. But now that we do, I think that it should be paid out.
I agree.
The reserve.
I agree too.
Okay.
Do you need a motion on that or?
Um, no, I think I'll just have it approved next week if that's okay. That way it's a formal document.
Sounds great. Awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the Fire District Two meeting update. We will be having our meeting Thursday here. The clerk was working on getting notice out to everyone. He'll be here with Fire District Number Two at 7:00 PM in the Commissioner Room. And that was a meeting requested by one of their board members to me. So I set it up with a clerk and she's coordinated efforts to get it scheduled, so.
So is it just the Fire District Number Two invited or?
Yeah.
It's a public meeting.
Absolutely, yes. And that's why she'll be sending out notice. She was going to get with CARE, The Globe, not, because they won't publish till Saturday after the meeting, but she was going to put it on social media and make sure that her distribution went out to public notice. So, yeah, just that's the only update I have on that. And then she's also going to provide us when she gives notice the agenda. I think there were two things that they put on the agenda. So, all right. No other questions about that one? We'll go to the County Lake One Pager.
Okay. So I sent the board, it was later yesterday afternoon, the final PDF copy that I put together for the County Lake.
That one actually did open for me.
Okay, good.
I think it's if they're on the shared servers or something. That's what I'm not able to access.
So I don't know, Joe, if you care to see it or not, but it just kind of grabs the attention of the parcel itself. It was a nice picture of the lake, talking about the sale proceeds would be reinvested back into infrastructure. Will support upgrades, maintenance and expansion efforts. It's got expenditures of the County Lake, how much operating costs we've spent. And then just again saying by selling this property, which is currently tax exempt, it'll be placed back on the tax roll, generating tax revenue and increasing the community's tax base. So we've got a consideration for sale, the list price, the acreage, this is their public notice, and then the public comment that was important to the board to be held at a certain date. So. I don't know if you guys.
I just saw.
Okay, okay.
I like it.
Yeah, I do, too. It's easy to understand and it provides all the information we want to, to get, and it does grab the attention, I think, of, of the viewers, so.
So, or is Tuesday, April 15th, still an okay time for the public comment?
Yes.
Okay. So I think what I would ask is if you, if the board approves this and then it can go on the social media if you want to and wherever else you guys want it to go.
All right. So I would look for a motion to approve the Atchison County Lake One Pager as presented by our Finance Director.
I'll start.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero.
Thank you. I did hear back from Drew, the Land Agent. He was working through some things. He wanted to find out the depth of the lake, the fish that's in it, what happens to the fish that's in it. So there's a lot more things that's apparently we have to figure out before it actually gets listed. So we're working through that. I've asked Joe some questions. He's helped me with some questions and there's some answers. Drew knows that this is important to the board to get out there, to have the public comment. He needs like a couple weeks turnaround time to get the listing live. So he's good with the May date. That gives you guys time, him time, and for everyone to feel comfortable about the transaction. So even if it's May, the second week in May, he said that's still fine. Yeah, so like May 13th, if it were you guys to approve it or whatever, that would be fine for him. He just wants there to be ample time between when you hear public comment that if for anything were to fall through, there's time to recover from it. So that's just one thing he was.
Something I don't remember discussing. There was, we get some kind of payment. Is it walking, hunting area or some kind of fishing thing? So I, I just wanted us to be aware of that so we don't drop that. I don't know what would need to be done.
I actually just found that out yesterday. I finally heard back from the state that if the property was sold, the county would need to prorate the money back to the state for the number of days in the year that public access was not available.
So we've already got the payment for this year?
We've got 75% of the payment for this year, and then they give the other 25% by October 1st. So, yeah, we've gotten some of it. So, but we don't spend that money. It just goes into the fund. That, that was something that we've, so it's, it's been collected over the years and it has, I think, a balance of $20,000 in there. And so I found out that we should use, there's a list of expenses for what that money can be used for. And the, the one that really stands out to me is mowing. So you can offset the cost of mowing it with this money. There's other things like repairing the, a fishing dock or chairs or roofs on, repairing the roof on some of buildings.
Shelter houses or something.
Which I don't think a lot of that would probably use up the money, but mowing, you can always offset that. So what I don't know is if we don't spend it while we have it, if we will ever be able to spend it, because we won't, we won't have the property to use the money on. So I need to figure that out.
It'd be great to add improvements as we're going through the process if we can. I mean, if that's what we're bound to, yeah.
If we can pull the mowing expense out of there, definitely that.
Yeah.
If we can pull the mowing expense out of there, definitely that, any of the. Do we do like not the sweet spraying or anything like that on there? Anything that we could, that we qualify?
I don't know, you know, some of the roofs on the children house, sort of the bathrooms, but I don't know if anybody's gonna wanna. And always sprayed.
Is that an insurance one that we could?
No, we don't.
Mark, where we know about the road situation, plating the roads?
I don't have anything on that.
So that's something that has to be done.
So I think that would definitely be at least a Roger and. I don't know where we start with that conversation. Drew asked something about the, could one of the roads at the sou- southern end be private or something?
Probably from Clay West.
And isn't that what you had, okay, that's what you had said.
From Clay West, that makes sense, yeah. And then also on the, on the west side where you come in the west entrance, I would think going down to the, to the spillway would be private also.
So I think that's definitely something as we move closer into the next few weeks of trying to figure that out. I don't know if maybe that's something we want to add to the agenda next week.
I was tasked with updating the spreadsheet, so I just wanna make sure that I put that on there, so. Atchison County Lake Roads.
Yeah, and I'll send an email to Roger with the board and Joe on it and Pat, so that we all know what's expected and coming up. And I, like, I don't know any information on what that takes to start that process. I'm sure Roger has a heck of a lot more knowledge of it than I do, but I don't know what he would need to be able to do that, so.
You think thirty minutes or less?
At the very least, I'm sure he could pull up some maps and go start talking about a plan, so. I think that's all that I have for now.
Real quick, just to backtrack, sports complex, is that what you were gonna want on next week's agenda?
Yes.
Sports complex.
It's a, would be a. Yeah, purchase order consideration.
Okay, and how, how long?
Just five minutes.
Five minutes. Okay, got it.
Okay. Do we have, this is off the subject, sorry, just something I saw in my stuff. Do we have an A I policy? Do we need one?
Probably.
This is something that kneecap implemented and I just brought it because I thought, I don't think we got one. And just for information, it's just kind of a general like starter A I policy, and I didn't know who really to present that to or maybe to.
I think Jody has, it's on her radar to get it going. And she, I believe, is gonna work with the I T director on whatever that would look like.
That's the first reiteration of one that I've seen, and I just thought, well, I'm just gonna hand it off and see if there's anything that, you know, sometimes it's starting documents, so if you wanna get that to.
Want me to put a note and in here to scan it in and send it to Jody?
Sure, is that okay?
Oh, yes, yes. And Scott needed to be in.
Yeah, I'll put, please scan.
I don't know how that's gonna affect us A I or if there's, you know, how that ever creeps in different ways, but it's, it's a coming.
We should also put on there to, to get back to Commissioner Noel.
Oh, what?
I'm gonna have him send us a copy of it, so you'll have it in the. I'll just put that in the blue paper.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I had sent Scott a proposal for doing a A I, A I policy, probably mid-year last year. And I gave kind of some other examples from other counties and what they've utilized. So I do know that it's in the works. I just haven't heard back from, since then.
Okay, this was just something that I saw in one of my board meetings, so I just thought, well, I'm just gonna pass this on to see how it would pertain or, I, I didn't think we had had anything yet, so I was just trying to be proactive and, and.
Yeah, I think one of the major concerns I had with it was some of the A I generators, if you put data into it, they, they secure that data and that's how they continue to build. So we wanted to make sure that if employees were utilizing certain generators, that they weren't putting data in there that's gonna be stored. That was my main concern.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Alright, thanks, Mark.
Thanks.
Next up, Joe Snyder, Road and Bridge Superintendent with a new road and bridge facility update, and then I have your purchase order that I've added, so. Start with this, okay. I would look for a motion to approve a purchase order as presented by our Road and Bridge Superintendent to wellmore in sales. This will come out of his twenty twenty-five budget under the culverts line item in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, one fifty-two, fifty-nine. To have a motion to approve.
So move.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero.
We've been discussing the new facility quite a bit lately, and I didn't know if the commission would be in a position where they would feel like moving forward with a bid letting for a general contractor and and the building of the shell of the building with the concrete floors and then all the utilities stubbed. And then at a later date, as we move forward, do the finishing work.
And that will stay within the senior village capital budget?
Yes.
I mean, I think it's time to get started. Everything takes longer than what we anticipate. And having that process to secure the building and the general and begin that relationship, the general with us will finish, I mean, future, right, like finish the project as we can or, or do. I mean, I think it's smart to do the timing sooner than later, I guess is what I'm trying to.
Yeah, I, I, I like the fact that we're staying within a certain budget and then phasing in the rest of it after the fact. Eric, what are you, what are your thoughts on it?
I'm still not there. We're not even starting on our budget yet. We've already a couple mills behind. And I'm not, even though I think the concept of, of not finishing the office part of it is helpful, I, I'm still not ready for it. And last year it was a big trying to think of the right word. Problem for us to be spending this, this, this cash on hand. And now this year we're not seem to be considering, it's not a, not a problem this year, so.
Well, I I think we're, we've got things going on that are gonna help us achieve that reserve that you're talking about, so we've got things in motion to, to take care of that. They're not completed yet, of course, you know, but I think we're in a position that we can start the bidding on this. It's, it's nothing out of our pocket that I'm aware of to, to go down that road, and we scrutinize all of that before it's, you know, before it's signed and sealed and done, so we're, I I think we go forward, that's my with, with what Joe's proposing, I think we move forward with that.
Okay, so I will call for a motion. Please tell me if I reiterate what you're saying, but basically I would call for a motion to allow our Road and Bridge Superintendent to go out to bid for, to stay within our senior village proceeds of capital dollars to bid out the building and the general for the project along with the concrete and stubbing in any utilities. Is that?
Yes, because we'd already talked last week about, well, go ahead.
Yeah, okay, so I would look for a motion to approve our Road and Bridge Superintendent moving forward with that. Okay, I will second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah. Last year you said you didn't want to spend any of the cash on hand. You wanted to borrow against that. And you wanted to leave that for, to build, accumulate interest. And you even brought us brought in the treasurer and the financial director and had their quotes. Have you even asked them about it this year?
Yes, sir. I asked them in everything, every financial decision I do, I ask the opinion of our finance director.
When was that? When did you ask? I mean.
Well, I ask every day. The most recently it was this morning. I mean, but I'm always in tune with, with that and not that our discussion should be about my thoughts or your thoughts, but more of the big picture, but we were talking about a completely different, we were gonna spend four million dollars, not one bucket of capital funds that we sold Senior Village to move forward with a phase of the project, so just to clarify that.
We hadn't gotten to that, what we were gonna, we hadn't looked, we were just in theory talking about building last year. We hadn't decided what we were gonna build. We haven't decided what we're building yet, so. Mark here, I mean, if we can ask him his opinion while we're at it, if there's any, if there's any doubt about his opinion on that, we can ask him, he's right here, so. If you wanna address him yourself, that's fine. What's changed from last year to this year?
Well, so I think the idea of selling capital and putting it back into capital is, is valid.
So wouldn't that have been the same last year, though? We were gonna use proceeds from Senior Village, predominate.
We ended up not using the proceeds because there was other, like other, like you used reserve instead of proceeds. You used eight ninety-seven.
They, we haven't spent any of the proceeds from Senior Village.
Right, that's what I'm saying, because you used it from other sources.
Well, well, we didn't build anything. In theory, we were talking about building a building and, and it was deemed that we shouldn't even spend that cash at the time, that was Casey's opinion, and that we should borrow against it, not spend any of it.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of borrowing any money.
Well, not now, but last year, that was the, that was the.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't want to borrow it then either. You don't have any money to make a payment, so.
Correct, you didn't, you didn't do that.
No, and as far as using the cash, I was against putting the cash to offset the budget when there's no, it's not like the cash is generating interest where you're using the interest that you'll continue to have year after year. Putting the cash in for a one-stop drop, the next year it's coming back to bite you. So that's why I wasn't for putting it against the budget.
Oh, I didn't want to spend it on the budget. I was just talking about the building, building a building. You were against building, starting the building last year.
So, so last year we started with opinions of costs from V G that were seven. Agree, and then had a commissioner think, well, four, and that was the number used in the meeting that we could do it for four. And no, like this has been the year that our Road and Bridge Superintendents went out and got like local budgetary numbers, kind of honed us in that we can achieve this to get the ball rolling with what we have in our capital funds for Senior Village. And every constituent that I've had, I haven't had anyone disagree that you should reinvest your capital funds into a facility improvement to see something in the future. So, I'm I guess that's where, that's where I, I stand, so. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Passes two to one.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Next is court, the EMS February twenty twenty-five report. So I would look for a motion to receive and file that as presented from our EMS director. Have a motion to approve.
Yeah, I just kind of looked over your shoulders.
Oh, sorry.
When, well, I should have.
He sent it on, Friday, three twenty-one at ten forty-seven A M. I can forward it to you guys.
I've got it. Let me just see if it'll come up. Some of these aren't cooperating. Okay, there you go.
Okay, so I'd look for a motion to receive and file as presented.
So move. Sorry.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Notices and communication. One thing, and not to be here from the agenda we approved, so I wanna ask for your blessing. But I'd like to have the conversation with the finance director of what we learned this morning from maintenance, if that would be okay. So in our workshop for department heads, here's a picture. In the renovations upstairs, our maintenance director had came with some things that have been uncovered that he does not currently have in his budget. The ARPA funds that we allocated to the courts for the renovations have been expended. So this would be in addition to, and it's one of those things that you can see from the pictures, like when you uncover these messes, the best practice is to fix them, and so that is his recommendation. They believe, best case scenario, they are thinking around six thousand dollars, worst case scenario, they definitely think that they could be within ten thousand. That was a question, there's four scenarios there, and the question was, was it within your spending authority of the twenty-five hundred? To address them, he felt comfortable that that would be the case. But again, you don't know until you kind of start doing things. The plumbing are pretty cut and dry, the electrical not so much sometimes when you start getting into those. So just wanting to touch base with you on that, because we don't have that allocated in his budget.
So I think the best place to use it or to pay for it is out of the reserve.
Okay.
Unless there's something he can give up in his own budget that would offset this.
And he did not, he, we asked that question and he doesn't have that, so. So the reserve on that, and then in that same conversation, when we were done, I asked if he had an idea of a budgetary number for what that EMS roof would be. And he's anticipating that number to be not to exceed like twenty thousand. So that was something we also talked about coming out of reserve, so I just wanna make sure we all communicate with you. Because our reserve isn't obviously where we want it to be, but noting we gotta take care of some of these things, so. Do you need us to make a motion for those two items, just so it's on record or?
No, because it won't be, I mean, you. No, because it won't be, uh, I mean, you definitely can, but it won't be paid out, until the board approves it out of the reserve.
Okay.
So even if it's a penny or a hundred million dollars, I don't pay anything out of the reserve until the board approves it.
Okay, so we'll just wait, um, for the invoices then, but I just wanna keep that on your radar. Um, because he was concerned it's not in his budget.
Okay, um, so I think that, I don't know if I, I do actually. There is some money, from the insurance premium. We budgeted about sixty-nine thousand dollars higher than anticipated, and, uh, workers' compensation, forty-four thousand dollars higher than anticipated. So between the two, it's about a hundred and fourteen thousand.
Fantastic.
So that can be used to roll over to reserve, or it could be used because it's in the general, the county general budget. If like there's something, um, like, one of these line items that needs to be used to offset that, you can do that, or you can just roll it to, right to reserve.
I think it's probably cleaner to roll the reserve and then pay these unforeseen messes out, out of reserve, just for.
Yeah, keep the budget.
Sure.
So that's something also.
Do you need a motion to roll that into reserve? You're good, okay. All right, so that's the only thing that I just wanna make sure and let you know that.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Introduce, we have, uh, no resolutions. We do have one executive session, um, follow-up from last week, thirty minutes with HR and finance, non-elected. You have that verbiage?
Your supremers again?
Uh, non-elected, thirty minutes. HR and finance. Follow-up from last week.
County councillor, no. I'll move the board of county commissioners to reassessing the executive session at, eleven oh one, eleven oh one, AM, to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-one. And that's the purpose of the claim of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee, and the board command of executive session in thirty minutes. In the commission room of the basement of the courthouse, and those present will be three commissioners, uh, HR and finance director.
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes. Okay, we are back in open session. Any need to extend? Okay, um, so, before we, into workshop, I am going to fill out next week's agenda spreadsheet, and the only two things that I'm carrying over, is Atchison County Lake Roads discussion, thirty minutes, sports complex purchase order consideration, five minutes. Um, is there anything else that we need to add for next week?
Cause we're trying to keep, on top of that.
I'll just let Joe know if he wants to add it. He can add that. So for your budget calendar, when are we starting? What are you thinking? Cause you needed us to make a decision based on your scheduling, right?
So I wanted to, to start in April, because there's some departments that will be ready.
Okay, so we'll start Tuesday? Wait, what is, today's the twenty-fourth, or twenty-fifth, so next week is our first budget.
Yeah, I, this might be too early to, for someone to be scheduled for Tuesday, but, I mean, I can, I can go. I'm sure Jody can go.
Okay.
Your budget.
Oh, yeah, I'm good. Okay.
We can do the commission, we can do the county general. I mean, there's, I can fill Tuesday.
Okay, so we'll start our budgets on Tuesday. Okay, um, I feel like I'm forgetting something. We have to determine what the topic is, and we have to record our CARE today. Our CARE radio segment. Is there anything we're forgetting? Let me look at my inbox one more time. Uh, Pat, thank you for the suggestion of the Globe, even though we missed their deadline. They could come Thursday. We're gonna do, oh, that's what it was. Child abuse proclamation will be next week. I knew there was something else we're getting to add on it. Okay. All right, well, do we wanna just decide what our topics are and record it in workshop, or do we wanna talk about the topics? I didn't reach out to emergency management on the storm week, weather week, um.
The county lake.
County lake.
Yeah, basically, just reiterate the, the, uh, the flyer.
Okay.
Reiterate the flyer, maybe explain where that's gonna be posted. Hit all, hit all the highlights.
Okay, all right, so we'll just use the first Friday for the county lake. And that we're kicking off our budget workshops. Okay. All right, so if there's nothing else, then I would look for a motion to adjourn into workshop to, record our CARE, um, segment.
Shall move. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. We will adjourn at eleven thirty-six.